I'd like to make an announcement that Item Three, the Blue Mountain Minerals Project, will not be heard tonight for lack of a quorum. It appears we will continue it until August 31st and hold a special meeting on this agenda item. So anybody here that's for Blue Mountain Minerals item, you're welcome to stay and listen to other things, or to leave, and put on your calendars, August 31st, same place, same time, okay? Now, anybody need an agenda for the remaining two items? I think there's some back there. Make sure everybody has the opportunity to have an agenda. If none, fine, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Ry wanted to say something.
I have a couple questions. I think it'll come up here in a minute on reports of whether we would report out on the Blue Mountain Minerals item tonight, or would I wait until?
We'll wait to the actual hearing.
Okay, so I don't have to say anything?
That's right. And Mr. Chairman, I can assure people in the audience the confusion of not conducting that hearing on your regular meeting schedule, even though it is being continued, we will send notices by mail to those who have expressed interest in that project, so they'll make sure that they do know that we're looking at the 31st of May, May of August.
I also might point out that this issue really didn't arise until, what, midday today, so there was really not an opportunity to advise all those who wish to participate, and it's just one of those things that occurs, but to follow the law, and we will follow the law, we will not have a quorum for that item, so. All right, getting started with our regular meeting, our planning commission business, any reports from the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to report that we had no items for your regular meeting on September 2nd. Now with the continuation of the Blue Mountain Minerals item, we will not meet on the 2nd, but we will, again, plan to meet on August 31st.
Okay, thank you. Any reports from commissioners? Seeing none, okay. Any report from the planning committee representatives?
Yes, once again, we have no, we had no meeting, so I have no report. Easiest job I've ever had.
That's pretty easy, yeah. Well, I hope it pays well. Any report from the Ag Advisory Committee? We do not have a member on that right now.
No, we do not, and that committee has not met either.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I should have that job, too.
Next item, minutes from our meeting of August 5th. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt as submitted?
I move that we adopt as submitted.
Motion second.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, so ordered. Okay, now, next section is public comment. Anybody is welcome to address the commission on any item that's not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll close that. We will now go to our public hearing. First item, shown as number one on your agenda, has to do with the 4C properties related to a 108-foot-tall multi-carrier wireless telecommunications tower located between town of Groveland and the grammar school. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. 4C Properties owns, kind of loud, doesn't it, a 77-acre parcel that is currently zoned exclusive agricultural, 37-acre minimum, that is located, as you stated, on an unnamed access road, three tenths of a mile southwest of the intersection of State Highway 120. The property is also located within Agricultural Preserve 176. 4C Properties is asking for your approval this evening of a conditional use permit that will allow them to construct 108-foot-tall multi-carrier wireless telecommunications tower, equipment shelters, and related equipment within a 50-foot-by-50-foot fence compound. This project, and for this project, you are the decision-making body, because it is a conditional use permit. This project was reviewed by the Agriculture Advisory Committee, excuse me, Agriculture Advisory Committee at its meeting on July 19th of 2012, because the site is within an agricultural preserve. That committee has recommended approval of the project by unanimous vote. The Airport Land Use Commission also reviewed this project at its meeting on August 2nd of 2012, and that commission has also found that the project is consistent with the Tuolumne County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. In reviewing the tower, the ALUC has recommended that there be a beacon on it. There is a beacon proposed for the tower, however, Section 175308OC of the zoning ordinance states that if a beacon is required by the Federal Aviation Administration, that we will not approve a tower. That's not the right site for it. And that was part of the process of coming up with regulations for telecommunications facilities. The applicant has advices that they identified a beacon on their tower in the event that FAA does require it. They are in the process of determining whether or not that is required. The FAA requirement is a 200-foot-tall tower. This is 108 feet, so they do not think that it will be required. We have a proposed condition number three that says that before we issue a building permit, they have to demonstrate that the beacon is not required. And so, again, if you do approve it tonight, that is subject to not having a beacon. In processing this application, we did receive letters from a few of the joining property owners. They were concerned about light from the beacon. That's one reason the county has that particular provision about no beacons. There were comments that the tower would be unsightly, and that it should be camouflaged. As you noticed in your agenda package, there were several photos that were included that were submitted by the applicant demonstrating that this is in an area where there's a lot of native vegetation, that because the tower is not excessively high, that it will be screened by that native vegetation. Other comments were that this would negatively impact property values in the area, and their concerns about access. This project was, when it was originally proposed, there was a question about legal access to the property, that there was a limitation under the easement that had previously been created. The applicants have secured a new easement by deed that allows them to fully utilize the access route. And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. York is here as well, if he has any questions about the road, but that issue has been resolved.
Any commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public. The way we run the public input, those in favor of a project will speak first, those who oppose a project will speak next, and then there will be opportunities for rebuttal and surrebuttal. So with that, any person that wishes to speak in favor of the project is welcome to address the commission at the microphone. Incidentally, you are not required to identify yourself. I have to say that. Okay, yes, sir.
I'll identify myself anyway. Leonard Casareto, I'm the owner of the property, the 77 acres. This project's been going on for quite a while. It's been through a lot of boards and different commissions and so forth to this point, and it's approved by county staff with 30-some recommendations, I think. So if we meet all those recommendations, I think we can handle that, and hopefully you folks will give me an approval on it tonight. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, anybody wish to speak in opposition to the project? Don't see anyone, so with that, we will close the public hearing on this matter, bring it back to the board for action. Discussion or action?
I guess I'll make a...
Jury?
...a comment, is that any of you who spend any time at Groveland, like I do, knows that this is one of our largest problems we have, not having cellphone coverage. It's a safety issue, it's a commercial issue, it's a convenience issue, and so, having more cell coverage there, I would love to see exactly what this site will do for us, which isn't clear, but it's going to make it better for sure, and anything's to help, and so, I'm overwhelmingly in favor of this project.
Okay. Any other discussion, comment? And we have a motion.
Yes, sir. I move we approve conditional use permit, CUP 12-008, subject to the attached conditions 1 through 33.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I think you need to have findings A through F.
And findings, yes, thank you. Findings A through F.
And I will say the same.
We have motion in a second. I'll call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered unanimously. Thank you. Incidentally, I did overlook approving the response to the grand jury report, but we will, I'll do that after the next item. Surprised you guys didn't.
We'd never do that. We're all excited about cell towers.
All right, next item, Jimenez, or Jimenez, however you say that, has to do with a parcel map regarding, what was the old Bray Boy Scout camp up just below Strawberry? And can we have the staff report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Joseph and Denise Jimenez own 79.8 acres that are currently zoned general recreational. The project site is located at 31300 and 31400 Old Strawberry Road, and as the chairman stated, this is the site of the old Berkeley Contra Costa Boy Scout camp, which was commonly referred to as Camp Bray. That camp was in existence from 1949 to sometime in the 1970s, and it had 17 cabins, and was used extensively by the Boy Scouts at that time. The Jimenez have requested this zone change, it's before you this evening, in order to pursue a land division. They've also submitted tenet of parcel map, T12-0132, to divide the property into four parcels with a remainder. Those parcels will be served by private wells and private onsite septic systems. In order for them to divide the property, the zone change is proposed to be 71.8 acres to a 10, so each parcel would need to be a minimum of 10 acres in size. 5.6 acres are proposed for open space. That open space would protect the south fork of the Stanislaw River, drainage is on the site, and also the Sugar Pine Railroad grade that goes through the property. Open space one zoning is proposed for 2.4 acres. That would be along the center line of the river, which traverses the project site in the south, excuse me, in the northwest corner. It would also be used to protect cultural resources, which is another spur of the Sugar Pine Railroad. The project site, as I mentioned, does front on the river, and the Sugar Pine Trail, excuse me, the Sugar Pine Railroad grade goes through the property. That railroad grade has been used for, by many people, as a trail to the river, and there has been interest in having it remain as a trail. A letter was given to you this evening from the U.S. Forest Service, and you'll note that the Forest Service is asking that, or proposing that there be public access on a trail and to the river. Because this project, before you, is only a zone change, that's not an issue for the zone change, but because the land division is only a tenet of parcel map and not a subdivision map, there is no requirement and no provision for requiring publicly dedicated trails on this site. The Subdivision Map Act and our own local land division ordinance provides for such requirements when it's a subdivision of five or more parcels. So, again, those regulations don't apply in this particular case. As we are processing this project, as you noticed in your package, there are a number of letters from neighboring property owners. Those comments in those letters, to summarize, are to retain the site for recreational use, to provide access to the river, to utilize the railroad grade as a trail. There was concern about whether or not the Delora Water Company would have enough water to serve this project. Again, this project's proposed to be served by private wells and not to connect to public water. There is no requirement for 10-acre parcels to be served by public water. Other comments are that there are insufficient fire protection for the project. That was addressed by our Fire Prevention Bureau, and fuel reduction on the site is required as conditions of the parcel map. The concerns about the roads that lead to the site not being adequate, because they are narrow, and that they cannot accommodate the increase in traffic. Creating four parcels with the potential of two homes per parcel would add a maximum of 80 vehicle trips per day from this project, which is not a significant amount of new traffic. There are also concerns about increased crime and also polluting the river. As I mentioned, open space zoning is proposed along the river in order to create building setbacks and also for the septic systems to be well away from the river. This project was reviewed through a negative declaration, which determined that although the project as originally proposed did have a potential to create significant impacts on the environment, those impacts have been mitigated, and the mitigation measures have been incorporated into the proposed conditions of approval for the tenet of parcel map. This evening, your commission will be considering only the zone change, not the parcel map, and you will also, if you recommend approval of zone change, you must also approve the mitigated negative declaration, or at least recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors.
I have a question regarding the trail using the old Sugar Pine Railroad grade. As I recall reading through this, is there's an alternative way to get around that so it's not blocked off?
There is another access that people can follow from the campground, you think you're talking about the campground, to get down the river. It's my understanding that there is a way that people can now get there. This is more convenient.
Yeah, so whatever happens to this project...
There's still access.
There's still access for the public to...
Yes.
...use a trail, if not exactly the old railroad grade.
That's correct.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions of staff?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll go to the public hearing. Those who are in favor of the project are welcome to address the commission at this time. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Kevin Barr. I'm a custom home builder, and I'm representing the Jimenez. It's Jimenez, by the way, not Jimenez. Okay, so anyways, just to respond to some of the, you know, comments that were just made, we're, let's see, how do you say that? Professional green builders, okay? So, we have been trained to build in such a way as to make a minimum impact, to utilize materials and all that sort of thing. I've personally used the trail system up here for almost 25 years, and I would never want to do anything that would make it so that Tuolumne County doesn't have good trail system or access or whatever. This particular property has a Forest Service trail 200 yards up the road from the gate where the railroad grade used to go. There's a section of the railroad grade that was deemed to be a cultural resource and is supposed to be fenced off, and that was part of the, you know, the cultural resource guys to figure out, you know, what had to be preserved. So, if we fence it off, I'm not clear on how it would even be an access anyways. Anyway, so there is an access there, it's 200 yards up the road. There's also an access across the river, where you can drive across the old bridge, there's a big parking area, and you can walk down to the water, it's only about 150 yards. And then there's access from the old bridge. Let's see here, as far as, you know, negative impacts on the river or whatever, the architect for this project is an architect from the Tahoe area, so we're building a very high-end custom home there right now, and that's the first project. The intention of the owners is to build three more cabins for their adult children, and that's why they're dividing the property, so they can do that. The permit we got required a stormwater retention system, so that all the water produced from the roads, the roofs, French drains, anything associated with the building and the driveways, goes through a stormwater retention system to a dispersal field to return the water back into the ground, so it won't go into the river. That was a 20-year system, and basically, it's like a bottomless giant tank, so the water can filter in. I decided to go over that with our septic engineer, Bob Belt, and we designed a 100-year stormwater retention system. So we surpassed the county, you know, approved permit, you know, by fivefold of what was required with returning the water into the ground. The septic system is built farther away from the high watermark of the river than was required, and has a double pump for backup, so if one of the pumps goes bad, the other pump works, and it's on a industrial generator system that's automatic. So if the power goes out, the generator will come on, and it can, of course, run the septic system and alert the, there's going to be an alarm system so that it'll alert the alarm company if there was something wrong with the septic. Like, let's say you left the bath running when you left the house, and it kept running continuously, and then both pumps failed, there's still an alarm that would go off, that would alert the alarm company. So anyways, I think we've really rang the bell as far as protecting the river. Of course, there's state laws with the water board, and we have a water board permit, and so we're conforming with all the local, state requirements to make sure that we're doing the right thing, because that's what we want to do. Some comments that the owners wanted to make in response to the Forest Services letter. The first thing I'd like to point out is, we've been working on this for two years now, and we've been taking our time, because we want to make sure we do everything right. We're not trying to rush anything. We've, you know, worked with Fish and Game, we have had a biologist do, you know, his reports twice, actually, to make sure everything was correct. Cultural Resources, we had a geologist on the job, you know, so we've done everything conceivable to try to make sure we're doing everything right. The Forest Service had quite a bit of time to make comments within the allotted time that was set forth, is my understanding. Were a little surprised about their 11th hour, 59th minute letter, because originally their position was, they don't need an access there, because there's one 200 yards up the road. So anyways, that's something I wanted to bring up. Okay, so the comments the owners wanted to convey here is, there's been years of, you know, people passing through this property that led to certain abuses. There was motorized four-wheeling, dirt biking, firearms shooting, littering. They're afraid that public access would, you know, lead to these kind of dangers and concerns. A great deal of expense was, and effort was put out to clean up the property in 2013. 500 yards of garbage and debris, much of it was trash piles and wood that was leftover when SPI owned the property, and these cabins from the late 70s and 80s, my understanding, were destroyed and piled up, which created a hazard, and it was a big giant mess. So, we hauled 10 50-yard dump, in dumps, out of garbage off this property. The property was masticated, so the entire area that we're trying to split was masticated by a guy that is a, you know, someone that does fuel reductions and that sort of thing with a masticating machine. The trees were all limbed up, so this wasn't done just around where the buildings are, but on the entire lower 35 acres to make it fire safe. So it was cleaned up, it was masticated, and now it's healing and returning to its natural state, which is the intention, you know, of the owners. Okay, and the trail that they're referring to is currently a driveway to the existing garage that was built there. It's a water tank building. There's 9,250 gallons of water stored in this building. We were able to locate water, which is very rare in Strawberry. It's not easy to do, actually, believe it or not, and that water, according to Canapa, the well drillers, produces 25 gallons a minute. So it's a really good producing well. It's not required by us or the owner, but we have provided a fire hydrant by the water tank building, and we're providing a fire hydrant by the building that we're currently constructing, with the intent of giving CDF, U.S. Forest Service, and the local fire department access to these fire hydrants in the event they may need water to fight a fire, they can fill up their water trucks. None of that was required, but it, you know, it's the right thing to do. The main concern of the owner is liability. So his main concern is, somebody goes onto the property, you know, we all know, we live in a state where you can spill coffee on yourself, or, you know, some's house can be burglarized, and the burglar can sue the owner for injuring himself. So, they're very conscientious about liability, and they're concerned of people going through the property that could, you know, create a liability issue. That's really their main, you know, concern. Their intention is to turn, return the property to its natural state, you know, I think I said that already, you know, wildflowers are growing, it all looks great now. The cultural survey conducted identified the need to rezone a portion of Old Sugar Pine Railway on the property as O1 in order to protect it from further destruction for public use. The trail is required to be fenced off from the public, so the uncovered artifacts present and future remains on site. This would prevent an easement as requested. So what that's about is, if this trail, this, you know, 200 yards of trail they want to, it might be a good idea to look at a map, too, if we could, because, you know, what you can do is walk 200 yards farther up Old Strawberry Road, and then there's a Forest Service Trail access right there. But, you know, if that was a easement, the problem is that the spur of the old railroad, you know, the old Sugar Pine Railroad is supposed to be fenced off, so it's kind of a contradiction there. We're a little puzzled about that. We're also a little puzzled why the, you know, Forest Service is waiting until the last minute here to say something when they've had, it's my understanding, well over a year, and there was a comment period, too, they never had any problem with it. You know, the public has always had access to the river, and we're not doing anything to prevent that, and there's still access to the river, and I personally will be riding my mountain bike and going through there and enjoying it like I always have, so I think that about covers it.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Any questions of Mr. Barr?
Uh, yeah.
No, 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 not from the public. Any commissioners, sorry. Any commissioners, questions of Mr. Barr? Yes, speak.
As to the trail, I'm trying to track this, I thought I understood it, but now I'm a little confused.
Okay.
You were talking about the portion to be fenced off, is that a portion of the existing Sugar Pine Railroad trail?
It is, yeah. There's a section that has been blasted, it's a curve, they call it the Sugar Pine Railroad spur, and the cultural resources people determined that that was a cultural resource, and it's to be protected. So if it's protected and fenced off, like they want it to be, it doesn't make sense for it to be a, you know, public right-of-way or a passage. It'd be great to look at a map, if I could show you what we're talking about. Yeah.
You can see the curve on Page Four.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out which curve we're, I think I understand which curve we're talking about.
It's in parcel one, correct?
Mr. York has a map that he can show the commission.
Yeah, this is pretty small.
Yeah.
This is the property, there's a note right here that refers to 220 feet south is where the hookup is to the Sugar Pine Railroad trail. So it's 200 feet south down here.
On a different page.
On a different property.
Yeah.
He's talking about fencing something.
That was this little piece.
Okay, all right, that answered it. That answered it.
All right.
Do you want me to?
No.
Actually, I may have that, but smaller form.
Okay. That was the confusion.
Thank you.
For the benefit of the public, this is the entire piece of property. This is the south end of Old Strawberry Road, and the access point to the Sugar Pine Trail is 220 feet, which at this scale would be about there to the railroad grade. And this is the little piece of the railroad that is to be fenced off, if I understand. That's right.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Barr, Cole?
Is the fence on all sides? We're talking about, it's completely fenced in, correct? So, we're fenced in on every single side of the railroad, so public access really is no public access?
You know, we're trying to cooperate and conform with whatever the requirements are, and it's our understanding that's what was required of us, is to fence this area off as a cultural resource.
Now, if you, if you look at the map in your agenda package on page 23, you'll see that there are two spurs of the Sugar Pine Railroad grade on the site. One, it's in the southwest corner, that's the one that would be fenced off. The other one is more centrally located, it actually parallels Strawberry Road. And so it's only that very small area that's going to be fenced off.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Peter, you got something else?
Well, I was just gonna ask, so that would be an entirely fenced-off area, I mean, I think that was what Cole's question was.
Yes, the idea is to preserve it by keeping...
So no one would be able to go in?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank, incidentally, Mr. Barr, I was involved in logging up there.
Oh, okay.
And trust me, there was a good reason to pile those buildings up, not leave them. But anyway, trust me.
We're okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing I just wanted to say, so the difference between what the Forest Service suddenly requested at the last minute here, and the way we're proposing is, whether or not you're going to walk 220 feet on asphalt to go onto the trail, or you're going to walk on Mr. and Mrs. Jimenez's driveway to access the Forest Service Trail.
Okay, I think we get the point there, isn't there an alternative there?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the project?
If you have some questions, I have to do later, after.
Are you in favor, opposed, or neutral?
I'd like to have some questions answered, but I don't know whether I would want to think about it.
Okay, we'll make that available. Okay, nobody else wish to speak in favor? How many wish to speak tonight in opposition? Will you raise your hand? Yes, raise your hand.
I'm twice as neutral, right?
Okay, there's only a few, so, okay, those in opposition now, welcome to come forward and address the commission.
John Buckley, CSRC, and I am not in opposition. If certain conditions could be applied that can eliminate some of the controversy, and it was very helpful, Barr Construction has very high credibility, and we certainly appreciate the quality of work that they do, so you can give kudos to them for the green building that they do. I think there was a little bit of misinformation and some lack of information that may be helpful, and just one thing I want to start off with, because, you know, there was a complaint that this was a last-minute thing by the supervisors. If I look on page 44 of what I had for the original packet over here, it's under recreation. I don't know if it matches up, I haven't looked at tonight's packet, but it's under recreation, page 44. Is that the same one, Bev, that you have this in there?
That's in the initial study.
Okay, in the initial study.
It's part of the initial study.
Right. So, reading the paragraph, the third one down is, "On April 16, 2012, a letter was received from the Stanislaus National Forest Summit Ranger Station, which stated the following, and just cutting to the key points, the main access into Camp Bray overlays what was once a part of the standard gauge Sugar Pine Logging Railroad Camp. Strawberry branch built in 1927, the grade enters national forest lands and proceeds downstream to Fraser Flat, and ultimately to Lions Dam and Twainheart. Between Strawberry and Fraser Flat, the railroad grade is a popular hiking and mountain biking trail. The forest currently has a temporary cutoff trail, one that's referred to, that starts on Strawberry Road just south of the private property boundary. There is no trailhead, and the topography doesn't allow for construction of a trailhead in this location, making it difficult for users to park safely. The forest is interested in obtaining a public easement along the railroad grade through this parcel. A trailhead could be constructed on national forest lands, et cetera." So, in 2012, the Forest Service provided very clear information that they were interested in trying to get a conservation easement, if possible, or a public access easement, a public easement across the property. So, you know, the fact that they may have reaffirmed that again is hardly a last-minute thing, since they had provided it in 2012. There's also a little bit of confusion about how this works. Most people who are taking the railroad-grade trail from either Twainheart, and there's places you can get in it, in Lakewood Park and other places, all the way across up to Lions, from Lions, Dick knows this really well, all the way up through the PG&E property, and all the way up along the South Fork, yeah, the South Fork, all the way past Fraser Flat. At Fraser Flat, it becomes one of the most highly-used areas and trails in the entire county. On a given weekend, I was there weeks ago with my wife, on a given weekend, there are hundreds on both sides of the river, but primarily on the side that has the railroad grade, because it's easily accessible. And people, especially older people, and I have at times seen people out there in wheelchairs, but older people are on that railroad grade, going up and down, and it's miles up to Strawberry, and they go up that way. The truth is totally true, that they do not now go out into the middle where the construction is taking place. I guarantee you, you are correct on that.
Mr. Buckley, address the commission, not the audience, please.
No, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. I'm agreeing with the previous speaker, that they don't go out into it, but that's because there's been all of this activity out in the middle of it, and instead, they move down and get as close as they can to the river, continue along the river. People are going to hike and fish along that river. I don't care what this, this commission, the county, or the property owners would prefer, for at least 100 years, if not longer, people have been fishing on both sides of the river. And when you talk about, Mr. Barr talked about the access on the other side, I walk down and fish on the other side, but if you're on the railroad-grade side, and you're either mountain biking, hiking, or walking, you cannot jump across the river, especially when there's high flows, it is not shallow enough to do that. You only have to continue on up. And so the question is, I agree, it wouldn't be fair to the property owners to push people out on that railroad grade in the midst of their area, so I'm sorry, facing toward you, I agree that's not proper, but how can this project be approved and provide some minimal public access that does not interfere with people using it? And I believe there's legal requirements to have fishing access, water access, along to at least the high-water mark on all rivers in our Urin process, that's what we've been told, so I would believe that there's a legal challenge here. But, I think there's a solution, and the solution I'm suggesting is, is that as a condition of approval, that the property owner, the Forest Service, and the county work to identify where there is a very narrow trail within the open space area, along the river, not up anywhere near where the homes being built, there's a 150-foot setback that's documented in here for any structure from the river, but in that area, that there simply be public access, so that people can continue to hike and fish along the river, not up in the midst of where people may have their gardens, or their dog, pen, or whatever it might be. If you attempt to not have any public access, there's going to be constant trespass, constant problems, and I have not seen, along either the Sugar Pine Railroad grade or along the river there, Trishan garbage. Up in the site, there was all kinds of Trishan garbage. I used to walk around up in there all the time and look at things, because it was the old historic camp and everything, but down along the river, people do really good job, and even the fishermen, who sometimes leave fishing lines and stuff, have generally done a good job. So that's one suggestion. The only other suggestion I have is this. There's been description that not only is Bob Belt working to create a wonderful stormwater detention system that's accessing to what the county's requiring, but there's an engineered septic system that's been put in place. At this point, there is no requirement for the other septic systems, which could be seven other additional structures, because when somebody puts in, and I notice in this document, the intent of the applicant, the intent of the applicant has no legal bearing at all, whether or not they intend to make it for three kids, they have a divorce, something changes, somebody dies, it's what you allow legally that makes the difference. So in this particular case, there could be, just on these four parcels, and not talking about the residual parcel, there could be eight structures. There could be a need for eight septic systems. All I'm asking from CSRC is that you put in some limit. I would even defer to staff as to what's appropriate, but if you look on that, on page 38 of the document, it's, it's, excuse me, on page 17, item 38, Sycamore Environmental Consultants recommends 150-foot building setback and 100-foot vegetation clearing setback associated with the South Fork, the Stanislaus. If you simply kept the septic systems 150 feet back from the river, whether they're always going to work or not, you're providing a buffer, and especially with multiple septics on this particular site, the potential is that at some point, one could fail. So, those are the only two things that I'm asking. I am not opposed to the project. Our center clearly understands, we worked with SPI for a long time, talking with them about it, and they didn't move forward, because they kept having wells fail. There were many efforts to try and figure out where water, which is, when Bev shared, read to you that this project would be based on private wells, it's not an S, it's a private well. There's only one well that's actually functioning, the others have never been proven, up to this point, anything to work. So you're approving this project, basically on one well, assuming that it potentially will provide for eight different homes that could be built on the four parcels plus the residual. So, I'm, again, just paraphrasing, if there's any public access opportunity in that open space area for a small trail, and if there's a setback of 150 feet, that would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Buckley? Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Yes.
This is your chance.
I mean, and I...
No, don't talk till you get there.
All right. Like I say, I...
We want to, we want to hear every word you say.
I'm not in opposition, I just, I have questions, and one of, you know, and concerns.
Okay.
And, and the two things, it's water, you know, and groundwater, and, and access. So, so I'll start off, well, I'll start off with the water, you know.
Mr. Chairman, first clarify, you said you're not in opposition, so...
Well, okay.
Do you, you can, do you want us to wait and speak under neutral or in opposition?
Oh.
Because we do take, okay, so perhaps Mr. Chairman call for any more opposition first?
Yeah, does anybody else wish to speak really in opposition? Okay. With that, we'll close that section, and we go, we'll go to neutral.
Okay.
And so you're welcome to ask your questions, address the commission, and we will try to get the answers for you.
Okay, and, and...
Specifically, give us your questions.
All right. My name, first of all, I don't, I know I don't have to identify myself, but I am a resident, my name is Meredithine, and I am a resident of Strawberry, and I know the history really well, I've been coming up in the 60s, and, and this particular area was considered the commons, you know, when we could, you know, and we had access to it, and now, and then there was a promise by the Forest Service, or there was back and forth that this was going to get traded to the Forest Service, or SPI was going to give it to the Forest Service in some sort of land exchange, and we were promised that, and it was, you know, we thought this would be really great, it could provide, you know, more recreation and industry to Strawberry, which is, you know, if there is a community there, a working community there is, is changing quite a bit, but...
Your questions.
So, access, I don't know if anybody's talked about the old Boy Scout trail, and I need to look at a map, again, I'm not real educated. I got this notice in the mail like a week ago, so, and, and so I'm not real educated on, on the actual, you know, where these portions are going to be, be or split up, but there is some, an area on the other side of the road that connects the railroad grade to Pine Crest. And this is very important for our business, and I, I live by rental, and I know the guy that, you know, provides this service, and he, he needs that, I mean, we need that access. And, I mean, and so I'm asking the Jimenez to consider the, the old Boy Scout trail, and I don't, like, again, I don't know if that's even been documented, but there is, there is, there is evidence of the Boy Scouts using that trail.
Is the Boy Scout trail different than the railroad grade?
It is, it's a different, it's a totally different trail, it connects, if you know where the Forest Service station is, there's an intersection there, it's 108 and Pine Crest Road, and there's an actual trail, and there's also another old road, the old original road called Pine Alley, that linked Strawberry and Pine Crest together prior to 1940s, when they, when the 108 was rerouted. So, anyway, I'm...
We'll, we'll get a response from staff in a few minutes regarding the old Boy Scout trail, right?
Yes.
Okay, next. Another question?
You know, four or five more, four more wells, we're going through water wars up in Strawberry right now. We outsourced our, our water company, and so we've got a new water company, and there's, they're searching for other sources of water, but we are in dire need of water, and I'm concerned if we dip four more straws into the groundwater, we'll lose our meadow, you know, that it will, and that's part of, the meadow down there is, is this lush, green wetlands, and, and I'm concerned that we would, you know, they'd dry up, and that could be rezoned, and then they could put more high-end houses in there, and I mean, I, I don't want to see that. What I would like to see, if the Jimenez families, the Stennis family and children live in these places, and give us a reason to get, get our school back in Pine Crest. So, anyway, that's a third, that's a third concern. Okay.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll ask staff to respond, if they can, to this so-called old Boy Scout trail and its use, or non-use, or whatever.
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the old Boy Scout trail, but I can explain to Meredith, whoa, I can explain to Meredith the relationship between where the Forest Service headquarters is, and where some roads are, and where specifically this property is in relationship to some of those roads, and I, by showing her this enlarged map and giving her a chance to look at it, but unfortunately, the, the Boy Scout trail, she might be able to figure it out by looking at this thing, but I, I've never walked it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
There is no needed easements of any sort on this property at the moment, is that correct?
The water situation, the wells drying up the meadow, do we have any studies regarding that type of...
No, we don't have specifically, this is a hard rock fracture system, so, as you know, you can have wells that are within a few feet of each other that have no relationship in the hard rock fractures. The wells are regulated by Title 13, the County Ordinance Code, and each well before can be signed off by Environmental Health, you have to show that there is adequate water for the type of use, and so if there's only one well so far that's proven out, they could connect up to four homes on that existing well without having to drill anymore, but they would then have to create easements to all these different parcels that they're creating.
Okay. Yeah, Peter?
But, up to four, they couldn't go, that would become a limitation if they wanted to go more than four?
Four. Then it comes a small water system, and that's regulated...
I knew that, so I was trying to get to, but, I mean, so technically, they can have eight homes, but they would have to find a second water source if they didn't want to end up in a municipal water system.
That's right.
Anybody else like to address the commission on a neutral, more or less neutral basis? Please come forward.
Yeah, I have a cabin just upstream from this, this whole thing, and I was reading this negative declaration, and I called Ms. Hendry the other day to just ask, clarify some things, and it's the same old access issue, sort of. She was, you know, there's all this talk about access from... She was, uh, you know, there's all this talk about access from the roads or from somewhere else, and it's, and the response that was given in the negative declaration kind of confused me a little because, um, I was, she, she, I asked her, what about just traveling the river, fishing? And her response was, and I may have misunderstood her, or maybe she was mistaken, that since they own both sides of the river and that, what I, you would call a certain corner of their property, that technically you'd be on private property and you can't do it. They have no easement requirements at all, even though this has, um, been used for hundreds of years, and maybe the public could go into a prescriptive easement action against them if they tried to close it off, but her impression, if I understood her correctly, was they could close it off. And then that brought up a whole other issue with me, because I don't know if you're all familiar, but then as, as you go upstream, there's a whole section that goes all the way into the meadow that Meredith was talking about, that is, that the guy in the meadow, Kalen Smith, owns, that the Conlins were forced to leave as what we all always thought was public access. But if this is true, and someone who owns both sides of the river can actually say it's not, then that whole river could turn into a private river for a long ways. And then also, one thing it mentions about access is it says that the river can be accessed at the bridge crossing Old Strawberry Road approximately point three miles. Well, I have the map here of Kalen's property, and that's public, that's private too. If that whole thing is, is a private thing through there, the public has no legal easement through there. It's always been granted, I know Kalen has no issues with it, but, yeah, my thinking is, if these people can close this off, eventually they will. And my question is, can they on a public waterway?
Okay, let's try to get an answer. Ms. Shane?
A state law and a, um, Forest Service Resolution from many, I think the nineteen fifties clearly states that, uh, when you have a waterway that's navigable, that people have a right to utilize it for fishing and other purposes, so-
Is this a navigable stream?
Yes, oh, yes, yes it is.
It's classified as a navigable stream.
Yes.
Just hold it a minute, let's-
So you, so you can, it, it, what, what you can't do, if it's privately owned on either side, you can't get off on their property and walk along the shoreline, you can walk down the stream.
In the stream?
In the stream.
Oh, so fishing, you're going to be fishing in the water. We all got to wear waders now, technically, legally.
Yes, but you, that's what I'm saying, you, you do have legal ability to utilize the river, but the, the property on each side, the property owner has-
As long as we're in the river. That's not very practical. Uh, and that is an issue aside from this zoning issue. This is a large issue with the whole Stanislaw River, because as I see it, first of all, I don't think that access is legally available to the public at the bridge, and downstream, the really only accessible one, easy, is down at Fraser Flat. That's a pretty good hike, I've fished that up there many times, that's pretty good, that's your public access across their section of the land, that's not such great public access. And so, uh, this question about can they do this is a larger question that is really a huge question for that river. As I see it, if they can do that, this river will eventually be a private river from their property to way up above Strawberry, where the main Strawberry crosses 108, cause that's all private, all the way through there, until you get to Forest Service land on the other side. So that's pretty strange, and this, I know this goes beyond the scope of what we're talking about today, but when I read this thing and I saw how this was worded, I, that, and Ms. Hendry, she pretty much told me what you're saying, they can close that off. That Fisherman's Trail, there's no public right to that Fisherman's Trail, it's been there for, I know it's been there sixty years, there's no public right to it, you have to be in the river.
Okay, thank you for the-
And there, and there's another question I have, that's, it's the, regarding the, uh, water thing. I also noticed the way it's read, reads here about people who are concerned about Del Oro, and the way it reads is that, um, they aren't, since they have this thing that isn't a subdivision or whatever, they are not required to hook to the public sewage treat, to sewage, public water system. But the question I have is the public water system required, if their wells fail, to provide to them, which would be a huge, Del Oro Water up there is loving to spend money up there. They're, they are, rate, rate base, they love to increase. They would love a million-dollar project if all these wells failed, and they could do a million-dollar project into there. Do, do we have to provide it? Does the community have to provide the water if those wells fail? I know they're not required to hook up, but are we?
Okay, you, can we answer your question now?
Yeah.
Staff, any requirement?
Um, it, it depends, I don't know if the, if the property is within the, uh, water company boundaries, and I don't know that it is, to tell you the truth, I'd have to look at a map. If it is, it's like TUD or any other, uh, water purveyor, then they do have an obligation. That doesn't mean they have to give it to them free, that, that anyone wanting to connect has to pay connection fees and anything else that, uh, extend water lines, that type of thing.
Well, yeah, but the community would face the extra cost of the rate base increase of whatever it took to bring the water there, and Del Oro did do the test wells there. We paid for those test wells. Del, the Del Oro customers paid, so it must be in their district because they drilled the test wells that failed, and then he did the well that succeeded. There's a test well shown on there that's, and we paid for that. So-
Well, thank you very much. You brought some interesting questions. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I have a question-
You have a question?
For, for staff on, on the river. Is it, what defines river? Is it high watermark?
Typically, yeah.
Okay, so to the degree that you're not walking down it in April, or whatever, you actually don't have to be in the water. It's only in the, only during April time when the place is flooding that you would actually be inside of the high watermark. Otherwise, I don't know how close the trail is to the river, but there is some room there, I guess, in terms of the, the-
Right.
Trail's much higher, it doesn't go in the water ever.
Okay. Any, anybody else, uh, let's see, we're on neutral, I think. Anybody else wish to speak neutrally? Okay, now we'll go to rebuttal. Uh, Mr. Barr has an opportunity to rebut the opposition.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and, um, thank you, Mr. Buckley, for the compliments. We really do care about the environment and doing the right thing and trying to build accordingly, so, you know, it's our every intention to do things the right way and the green way, which is to conserve and sustainability and all that sort of stuff. So anyways, starting with the septic systems, um, you know, the code requires that the septic systems are away from the river anyways, and all the cabins along there, you know, actually, many of them don't meet code, but they're existing. These properties would, because the way we're building is, you know, Mr. Jimenez doesn't want to take any chances, he doesn't want to have his septic system fail. And so that's why we're using a double pump system with generator backup and an alarm system. So we have, uh, and the other buildings will be built the same way.
How many feet away from the river would the septic systems be?
Um, high watermark to the, uh, septic tank is one hundred feet. That's, it's my understanding that that's County Environmental Health Code. The actual leach field have to be farther up the, uh, up the, um, you know, the slope because you don't want to be on a steep hill with a septic system. And since this property has so much flat area, it has ideal areas up the hill to install your, uh, leach lines. If you're going to have a force flow engineered system, which we have to have here, uh, you take the leach fields to wherever it's most practical, and that's farther away from the river. It makes no sense at all. In fact, you couldn't do it because there's boulders and stuff down there.
Well, the suggestion was made that they be a hundred and fifty feet away from the river.
That's unacceptable.
That's what?
That's acceptable, a hundred and fifty feet. You know, right now, the, the leach fields there are probably two hundred feet from the-
Well, then there's not an issue. Okay, Peter?
Would that include the tank, though? I mean, cause you're talking about the whole system. I, I have to see Mr. York's ready to answer, but I mean, great the leach fields are out there, but I mean, does they have to have the whole thing a hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah, so the tank is part of the tight line system. There's, you know, it doesn't leak. You know, if it leaks, then there's a problem. Oh, and I should point out that we have a pump tank, so we have the capacity, and we also put in a larger tank than what was required, so we have an extra tank in the event that all these backup systems failed.
I, I understand all that, I'm just wondering if you agree to a hundred and fifty feet, and you have your septic tank within that hundred and fifty feet, if that's an issue.
The septic tank has to be down by the building, and the buildings would be a hundred and fifty feet from the water. So, I mean, actually, okay, there's two different things here, okay. So the, the construction of the buildings have to be one hundred and fifty feet from the center line of the, of the river.
Right.
The, um, septic tank has to be a hundred feet from the high watermark.
Right.
So it's pretty close, but I think we're more like a hundred and twenty-five feet with septic tanks, realistically speaking.
I'm just asking that you're not agreeing to something you can't meet, so.
Title thirteen, which regulates septic system designs in Tuolumne County, has two different standards, one for the leach lines requiring the bigger setback, and one for the septic system, as he pointed, that's a tight system. They allow the septic tank to be closer than the leach lines.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, anyways, moving on to the wells, so, um, I should point out that we're currently constructing the main house for the Jimenez. Okay, so we have a permit, we're building the main house on the property in its current legal state. Um, the intention is to split the property so they can build houses for their children. Um, you know, during the construction here, we've been using the onsite water from the well, and last summer, we had the opportunity to give our well a stress test. We were using five to six thousand gallons a day, five days a week out there, for months, and this is during a record-breaking drought, okay? Now, a single-family residence uses perhaps six hundred gallons a day, so that's, you know, for four residences, that's twenty-four hundred gallons. So we have three times the amount of water necessary, uh, in storage for these four residences, and there's also the twenty-five gallons a minute that the pump is replenishing those tanks. So the point is, is Mr. Jimenez wanted to make sure there was plenty of water, and not only water for domestic use and fire sprinklers and the fire department, you know, and so, this well, you know, SBI did not find, um, the wells, the well we found, and one of the reasons was, it took some creative thinking. We had to make a temporary construction access to get the drill rig down to where the best place to drill was. We could do that because we could pull the drill rig out with a forty-thousand-pound excavator. Uh, we witch the property, there's five, uh, places on the property, which is not a lot for eighty acres. Water is rare up there, but it has five, uh, potential well sites. Uh, one of them is currently in use, the other one, SBI drilled and produced nine gallons a minute, and we ran conduit out there, so that's a backup system. And then we have three other potential, uh, sites. Uh, Mr. Jimenez didn't want to just rely on witching, which actually works really well, so we hired a geologist that studied the minerals and the ground and the Google Maps and things like that to confirm the location of these water sources. So we feel like we have a really good water source out there, and we've actually proved it by the amount of water we've used to, uh, reconstitute soil, um, you know, for compaction, concrete, you know, everything required during the building process. Um, as far as the-
We have a, we have a question. Commissioner Baker?
Uh, the, you're talking about the nine thousand gallons, it's an existing water tank that's there. Is there any intention to make that bigger, or is that the water tank that you plan on having serviced when you have all four buildings?
It's for all four buildings, and it's three times, if, if it's set there, you know, and wasn't replenishing, is, there's three times as much, but with the water replenishing, it's, it'd be very difficult.
So maybe my other question may need to be directed to, uh, Ms. Shane, but is there a fire-
No, there's not, because this is, again, agricultural zoning. One thing, however, is under the current building code, fire sprinklers are required in all new homes, so they will be equipped with fire sprinklers.
Okay, uh, wind up your, uh, rebuttal if you would.
Yeah, we ran large water mains down to these buildings, or to the building site that we're working on right now, and an engineer calculated the size of the pipes in order to provide enough water for every sprinkler head in the building to come on at the same time, which is not the way it works, only one sprinkler head comes on where there's heat source. So anyways, um, that, we got that covered. Um, on the trailhead, or what's being called a temporary trailhead, now I'm going back to the access issue here, uh, there is a viable place to make a parking lot there. Um, I don't know how it works with the Fire, Forest Service, but they own both sides of the road. They don't only own the downhill side where that trail is, that they're calling a temporary trail, um, they own the other side of the road, they could build a parking lot on either side if they wanted to. So this property, the Jimenez property, adjoins the Forest Service, so the west side of the Jimenez property is Forest Service property, and that is public access to the water or the river. As far as the river goes and hiking along the river, uh, when I take my mountain bike out and I go on the old railroad grades, I don't take my mountain bike with me down to the boulders. Personally, I park it up by the road and I walk down there, and you can walk down there easily from either side of the river. Um, let's see here, so, uh, on the, um, uh, let's see here, what else was there? The trailhead, the trail, oh, okay, so as far as, you know, public access along the rivers, um, the high watermark, in my understanding, is before there was a dam at Pinecrest Lake, so it's really quite a wide area that would be defined as the high watermark for, for fishermen or public access. You don't have to walk in the water. All rivers are open to public access, and beaches in California, you just can't trespass to get to that waterway. You've got to take a legal access to get there. And of course, there's little cabins all the way along the river, and nobody's providing access to the river there, but there is this parking lot across the river, which makes an easy way to get there, so I just wanted to point that out.
Peter, did you have something?
I was just going to substantiate the gentleman's, you know, statement because of federal laws that you had, it's the last known high watermark before any human activity to change it. It's a difficult thing to actually identify, but I've, in my professional career, I've had to do that. So you're correct, the question is how far up is that? I don't think anybody knows.
Okay, let's not get too-
Within the trail that goes along the river, I mean, you, you can walk along the river. You know, the Jimenez, uh, like a lot of people, have childhood memories of coming to Tuolumne County, they actually had their honeymoon at the, um, Strawberry Inn, and, um, they love the area, you know, they could have moved to Tahoe or other places.
I think we're getting off a little bit here, Mr. Barr. Uh, have you got anything else on your rebuttal that-
Yeah.
Okay. Specific?
Let's see here, so I think I addressed the water issue, we've tested our well and it works very well. It's also a Artisan well, by the way, so once this well was drilled, it's coming out of the ground on its own. Um, it's a real producer. Um, so the other met, you know, the people are talking about a trail that goes up to the Forest Service building up there, you know, so you can walk to Pinecrest Lake. That's, those trails and those roads are going through private property, so perhaps the Boy Scouts use those trails, but, you know, from what I've seen, is, uh, recent property owners have put up no trespassing signs. Okay, well, I think that about covers it.
Okay, any last-minute questions for Mr. Barr? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What? No, uh, we don't take questions, I'm sorry, unless you're a speaker. You, you can sit down now, Mr. Barr. Okay, sir rebuttal.
John Buckley, C-Circ, and I'll make this quick. Um, I think that actually we've heard, despite kind of the length of it, that there's actually some middle ground that may have solved some of this. One is, I did not clarify, but I appreciate staff and Peter clarifying again, that the difference between the septic system and the leach fields. The leach hills is what our center has been concerned about. If there's a distance of a hundred and fifty feet from the leach fields, if that simply could be written in there, it's a winner. Everybody, I thought I heard support for it, excuse me, I thought I heard support for it, it sounds like that, that there's a winner there. The other one is, I thought, I also heard support, acceptance, that people can walk on the property, even Mr. Barr was saying it, he does it too, walk along the river. And the challenge is, is for there to be clarity in whatever approval you have, that the property owners are not entitled to curtail the walking in that area, which, whether we define it the high watermark, whatever, that area in closest proximity to the river. I emphasize again, I'm not trying to ask for people to be up harassing, because I understand legitimate need want privacy around the homes, but as we've heard from other people, at least for sixty years, I've been going along that place, in that area for forty years myself, I know people will walk along the river. If you could just clarify either that- If you could just clarify either that this project approval does not constrain legal access along the river, some sentence or whatever it is, or have it as a condition that the applicant work with just the county, not the Forest Service, just the county, to identify where a trail may be most appropriate to minimize controversy along that edge of the water as close as possible? If there's any way to clarify that, because otherwise, you can say, oh, it's, it's legally accessible. What's to prevent a son-in-law or somebody from putting up a no trespassing sign, and all of a sudden, now we have this conflict, not what you guys think you approve of?
Hey, gotta look out for those son-in-laws, John. Okay, thank you. Well, okay, what?
Bring it back.
That's the commission. Oh, yeah, is there anybody else on this rebuttal thing? You didn't speak first, I'm sorry, ma'am, you can't speak now.
Oh, I didn't?
No, you didn't speak originally, and your rebuttal, sir rebuttal is strictly on those who spoke originally. And you, sir, you spoke neutrally, didn't you?
Yeah.
No, you missed the cut. I don't think there's anybody else spoken opposition, was there? I don't think so. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. All right, a couple of issues here. 150 feet for the leach, leach field. That make sense? Can we put it in?
For the leach fields, yes, I think so.
Okay. The commission is only considering the zone change tonight, which you cannot condition. It's the tentative map, in which the county surveyor will conduct a separate hearing where those conditions would apply.
So it's out of our purview?
That's right.
May we suggest that? We can't require it, but we.
You can't require it. You're making a recommendation to the supervisors on the zone change only.
All right, you're right on. Yeah, Mr. Baker?
Didn't we just hear that's what the law was anyway?
Well, actually, I think Mr. York is looking it up right now, as to what the actual setback requirement is.
I'm not sure that we're here to legislate. So if we've got a law that's here already, that, that says what we want it to do, or that it sounds like we've got what we need.
Well, again, the, the county ordinance code specifies the minimum distance from various types of waterways, and it depends upon the classification of them. And so that's what.
Who's going to address?
Okay. Title, I'm reading out of Title 13, and it talks about the location of sewage disposal systems. The requirement for the separation from a perennial stream, or in this case, a river, is that it be, the disposal field be a minimum of 100 feet, and the septic tank be a minimum of 50 feet, and that's as measured from the high watermark of a 10-year frequency flood.
However, however, the, when the action you're taking tonight, concerning the open space zoning, because open space, one zoning is proposed 50 feet on each side from the center line, and then the open space zoning would be another 50 feet, so there'd be 100 feet of open space, so they couldn't have a septic system within that space anyway, regardless of what the ordinance code states. So it has to be a minimum of 100 feet. There's also a 150-foot setback for buildings, and that is proposed as mitigation measure, and that is shown on the map on page 23. So I believe it has been addressed through the environmental document.
Hey, Peter?
I think I just encouraged the applicant to consider making it 150 feet. I know we can't require it. Second question, on the easement. You can't require an easement, that's what you started out way back when saying.
That's right.
I don't see how we can get to where Mr. Buckley wants to get to if, if we can't require an easement. Again, I think that's a cooperative issue for the applicant to work with interested parties, in the interest of trying to perpetuate everyone's ability to enjoy the river. But I don't know that we have the ability to require that, do we?
Again, we, we do not have the ability, as opposed to on a subdivision map, then, as you're well aware, then there is authority, in fact, there's a mandate that you provide for public access to waterways, but.
That's not what we have in front of us.
That's not the case for a parcel map.
All right, so, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Can you educate me a little bit on prescriptive easement? We've heard about this over the years, it's been used a certain way for a long time, and therefore, would that apply in this case at all?
Prescriptive right must be established by court action.
Requires a judge.
So someone would have to go to court with the property owner to establish that there is a prescriptive right.
So it seems to me that that coordination that you're talking about, the carrot in the front of all of that, is that if somebody decided to get unreasonable about this, which it sounds like nobody wants to get to, that, that remedy is still out there. This is why you, we can always go to court and get a prescriptive easement for this, because it's been, been used this way for a long time. So it seems like something that's done outside of what we are often do here.
That's right, there is still another recourse, yes.
Yeah, and the fact that high watermark is a historic high watermark, seems to me leaves plenty of room for people to wander up and down there.
You know, like the.
I think. Okay.
Can I make a clarification?
Well, I'm sorry, it's really over as far as a public hearing is concerned.
There's a, it's open, it's open space, it's 01, 150 feet along the river corridor is what we're proposing on that map.
We've already, we've, well, we've addressed the open space, and, okay. Other discussion, Cole? No? Want to make a motion or modify the motion, or what?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the negative declaration prepared for this project, based upon following findings A through F, and recommend approval of the proposed zone change, based upon the following findings A through C.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Further discussion? Anybody want to add any other items to it or anything? Seeing none, I will call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, proved unanimously, and that ends that item number two. We'll go back to the agenda, on our item five, on our business, having to do with approving, approving a response to the findings and recommendations of the grand jury. And we do have handout here, as well as what was mailed, and the changes to what we discussed last time is in red, and I think we all had a chance to read that. I don't, there's no point in going over the whole thing again, which we did judiciously last time we met.
We did.
So what we're talking about is looking at the changes, which are printed in red, to see if we approve of those.
I have like an extra couple hours to kill now, since we're not good yet, thanks.
Well, some of us don't stay up that late.
Some of us have two hour drive.
Okay. Does anybody have any constructive comments?
I'm not meant to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, staff.
If I could just explain why you are handed out revised responses to the grand jury report. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors considered its response to the grand jury, and they are, we requested by the grand jury to respond to almost all of the same findings and recommendations that you were. In fact, the county administrator took almost verbatim these comments. When it came to finding seven, one of the supervisors questioned, because we'd said we agreed, and then we responded, and the recommendations that we had implemented, but he raised a very good point. And he said that the finding actually says wishing that asking persons, and the very issue that you raised tonight, Mr. Chairman, is you can ask, the difference is you can't require. So he thought it would be important to clarify that, and so this is why this language is proposed, to be consistent with how the board ended up responding to that very same issue. So it clarifies here that it's okay to ask, you just can't require. So that's what all that red language means.
Okay, go ahead. All right, how about, same thing with R7, huh?
Yes, R7 is just adding language again about, referring back to the change to finding seven.
And the other, no, the other was a general response, which was sent out August 19th?
Yeah.
Or sent out August 10th, I guess.
Yes, we had already sent that out to you, and that was the direction your commission requested, to be able to explain primarily what Commissioner Latoya brought up at the last meeting.
Okay, anybody have any problem with that?
No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes we have made to our initial response to the grand jury.
So moved.
Motion? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, proved unanimously, and I believe that concludes our business.
Did you go for item three? I thought you said you had to go to the business later and.
We have to formally.
We have to formally continue, or have we already done?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. You kept saying item three, I'm thinking of a plan, Commissioner. Yes, we, you have to do item three.
Okay, motion, do we have the special meeting?
No, 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 no.
Now, what is the?
Okay. No, 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 let's, let me pull back my agenda here. Item three is consideration of certification of the environmental impact report for the Blue Mountain Minerals mine in Columbia, a conditional use permit to amend the conditional use permit that currently exists on the property, and to amend the reclamation plan. Project site is located two miles northwest of the town site of Columbia, at the intersection of Marble Quarry Road and Parrot's Ferry Road. This project requires a public hearing. Mr. Chairman will first ask if there is any commissioner who has, and something to add to this.
I will recognize Commissioner Fraser first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself from this public hearing, due to personal friendship with principals and to avoid all appearances of impropriety.
Thank you. Cole?
Mr. Chairman, I'm disqualifying myself from participating in this decision, based on Government Code Section 7.100, because it is reasonably foreseeable the decision will have a material financial effect on my business, due to a business contract with Blue Mountain Minerals.
Thank you, well done. And so with that, we don't take any action.
So then, because we no longer have a quorum of the commissioners present to conduct a meeting, however, pursuant to the California Government Code, you do have the ability to continue the matter to a future date.
Which will be August 31st.
At 6 o'clock PM.
6 o'clock.
Yes.
Do we need to make that contingent upon them being able to make it?
No, just do it.
The only thing, we would make a contingent on the location, because we haven't verified that this room's available. But, so it'd be May, I don't know why I kept seeing May, August 31st at 6 o'clock PM. Presumably, this location, but notices will be mailed to adjoining property owners and others who have expressed a desire to be notified.
Okay, doesn't take motion or anything?
No, no. In fact, you can't make a motion, because you don't have a quorum.
Well, that's true, too. They're not even supposed to be, he's sitting here.
That's right.
Okay, with that, I think we, I really.
I think we've cut.
Forgot all about that.
Yes, I did too, I got confused there.
Okay, with that, we will close the meeting.